... stands and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, July 7, 2014. At the time, 7:00 PM, the Director of the Greenfield City Council was called to order. It is time for silence on that conference. All, please, ready?
Blake.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Daryl.
Jane.
Here.
Daryl was asked on vacation in Florida. Are there any changes or amendments or questions to the units? From the Washington State Department? There is nothing, and I would say the motion to approve the two minutes as perceived.
Second motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same side. Motion passed. Nothing other than old business, new business. Mr. Horace Reese.
Here, sir.
There you are.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Horace.
We may be on the agenda tonight. Some of you probably know why I'm here, some probably don't. So let me clear up any misunderstandings or anything that might be out there on the street that some may think. I am part of the Agape Center. Agape Center started in 2010, early spring. Three pastors met with three laypeople and started, and the walls started growing. But it took until November 16th of 2011 before we actually were open. The door was open on Luden Street, and in that few months, we didn't have just lots of business because a lot of people didn't know we were there. At that time, we were part of six different churches. The churches were putting their money into one common pot and helping the poor, helping the people less fortunate than most of us here, and seeing what we could do to help the poor of DeKalb County. In 2012, we opened for full-time. In 2012, the churches made it possible for the Agape Center to give out $48,000 to the less fortunate of this community. 2013, that number jumped from 48,000 to 73,000. This year, if the thing continued on as it is, we would be at 92,000. But before we ever began, in 2011, Mr. Bailey and I, let me introduce the people with you today, Ernie Bailey, Carmelo Velez, and Emily Velez. Say a little bit more about them in a little bit. But we realized when we were planning on opening that there were some other things that needed to be done in the community. We were seeing, and it was getting worse, we were seeing the homeless were not being taken care of. The only way that we could take care of them was maybe put them up in a night or two at Qualia Inn. And that was getting more and more and more expensive. But in 2011, Mr. Bailey and I were asked if we could go and research another place that was demographically similar to us, and so we went to Green County, a county that's just about the same size of us. And we spent a day in London and talking to the gentleman that ran the, with the ramrod of the group down there. They had not opened their homeless shelter yet, but they had everything else in place to take care of the less fortunate. And he was sharing that by the time the next year rolled around, they were hoping to be able to take care of the homeless. When the police department or someone brings someone to us, or a pastor brings them to us, we at the Agape Center, we interview those people and decide what was best before we could help them, where we could be the most useful for them. But we were only able to afford to maybe put them up one night, maybe two nights, three nights at the very most. And that was extremely, extremely difficult. I don't know if any of you read the June 22 Indianapolis Star. If you didn't read this, about this homeless young man. But it was quite lengthy, and I'm not going to go back to it. But we realized that we were going to have to do something because of that money that I've shared with you. About 20 to 25 percent of that was going to help the people with housing, or the homeless. We started looking for a place that might work for us. We've been looking for about a year and a half. Have one property that we looked at, and I'm not going to cite where it is because he probably wouldn't like for me to do that, and so I'm not going to. But it was going to cost us about $350,000 to buy that building, that building's, for all. And we realized we couldn't find a way or see a way to come up with that kind of money in this community, and so we didn't see it possible for us to be able to do that. This last year, Keith Hipskin is our president, and Keith would like to have been here tonight, but he called me a couple hours ago, and he had an emergency in Indianapolis, medical emergency. He said he needed to stay in Indianapolis where their president would come to meet him. He's our president. And I asked Keith, I said, Keith, how many homeless people do you find at the high school? He said, this last school year, 49. Keith called me one time, and I was in Shelbyville, in a doctor's office, and somebody knows that I'm a casa, and I was in a doctor's office and getting ready for a meeting there. And he said, I have a homeless senior today. What can you do for him? My first question was, Keith, is he 18? Is he 18 with him? Probably help you. If he's not, we probably can't. 49. Now, if he had 49, how many are there in the county? Schools, two county schools are about the same size as Greensburg, so I have to assume there are probably 49 in the county school this year. What are we going to do and how are we going to help them? And if you, I'm going to give you a handout pretty soon, and if you look at that handout when you get it, the best, and it came from this article, the best demographically that would cite who we are would be Shelby County. Shelby County in 2007 had, and it's on a charge, it's hard for me to say, it looks like they probably had maybe 50 homeless teenagers in Shelby County in 2007. This year, or actually 2013, looks like they have about 85 Shelby County. So if we're the same as they are, we are probably very similar to those same figures. A homeless person isn't necessarily a person that's out on the street living under a bridge. It could be someone that's sleeping on the couch of someone of whom it's okay for them to be there for a while, but that gets old. We had a situation right here in our own community about two months ago. Lady moved back from Phoenix. She's from Greensburg. She moved back because her sister asked her to move back here. And so she moved back to live with her sister after three months. Her sister told her, I'm going to kill you, and she put her in the hospital. She was in the hospital five days, then we get a phone call from the hospital, what are you going to do with her? And back to her sister, not going to get any deeper than that, but we worked it out so that she could be taken care of. She found an apartment here in town and doing well. But we felt like we have to do something. Now, we didn't come too into spring, when normally you'd be coming to and asking for help in some way to help us do something. Why didn't we? It's because we weren't prepared there. We worked, this is only about two months old, maybe three. And that's when the building that used to house the nuns at St. Mary's was put on the market. We had eyeballed that building, but had no clue that it was going to be for sale. But it is for sale. And they had it appraised, and it was appraised at $175,000. But they had another appraisal of that. The appraisal came from someone out of town, but the appraisal that was local was $125,000. We have made an offer on that building for $125,000 to St. Mary's. We have until October 1st to give the money to them. So we're coming to here tonight to ask you for help. Don't know where the money is? Don't have any clue where you are? But we would just ask you to help us buy that building. We think it's, we know it's going to cost $125,000 to buy it. We have no clue how much it's going to be to retrofit it. We're assuming something from $40,000, $60,000. We've done our homework, and we have three persons that are in the accounting business, in structure, and they're willing to come and work on the building for nothing. Habitat for Humanity has some materials that we could use the building. So it's not going to be nearly as expensive to retrofit it for what we need as it would be if we had to go out and hire someone to do that. Also, the building that the Agape Center is in, we need to move. We are outgrown and without runner by leaps and bounds. We can't take care of the 13 to 16 people that we get that comes to that building every day that we're open. We're open three days a week. We need to get them out of that. Our goal would be on the building that we proposed to buy was that we move the Agape Center into the center floor, main floor, and have women housed in the upper floor and men in the basement. We've been to Hancock Hope House, which is in Greensville, and that's Hancock County as well as Rush and Shelby that work together, and they've been doing this since 1992. They've given us all the paperwork, what to require and so on with the person that comes in. And they've offered us all the help that they can give us, anything that they own, that they're not using right now as ours, but we can save the money by lending back. We've also been down to Orphan Brain Train, which is down near Seymour, and they have all the bunk beds that we can use. They also have all the carpeting that we want. So we've done our homework in trying to get prepared for when the day comes that the building is ours, but we need help to purchase that building. So I'm here tonight asking you to, I'm not asking you know how much the building costs. I'm asking you to do what you can do, take it wherever you need to take it and do with it whatever you'd like. But I'd like to be open for any questions you have, or you're welcome to ask any questions of the board members that are with us. We've also, Carmelo and Emily, moved to Greensville last October. We met them in November. They ran a homeless shelter in New York City in the Queens for 25 years. There are source of information as well as Hancock Hope House, as well as the Orphan Brain Train. So we think we've done our homework, but we're ready to get started, but we just need help. So if I might, I would like to leave, and by the way, Mayor, I appreciate what you put on the agenda, the tender loving care, but that's a little bit wrong. It's a transitional living, so, but it will still be the same thing. So I'm going to give this material to Blake, if I might, and ask him if he would get it to the board members, the mayor, and so we'll have something in front of you to look at. But we're certainly open for any question if anyone has one.
Council, please, read.
Have you guys considered any kind of fundraisers to help raise money for this?
We have been, and we, inside this, there's a letter that we've sent out. We had a gentleman in town that gave us some names of some good donors in the city. We've sent a letter to each of them, and we have, and we've a few made, earned, they treasured $8,500. And so, about $8,500. So we have tried that. We are planning an ice cream social on the property. And that same group of people, plus all the business people in the community will get an invitation. Not sure exactly when that's going to be. We feel like if the people, if they're going to be a good donor, but anything's good. But if they could walk through it and see what it is, the potential it has, and in the packet that I gave you is a diagram of what we perceive the second and third floor to look like. We don't have the one for the basement, because we're not sure of that. Anyway, so, but that's in there. And we've done everything that we have seen that we can do, and we're going to continue to do that because regardless of what you do, we need startup money. So wherever the money comes from, and whatever, however it's brought, and we also have a plan as to how we hope and think that we're not going to be coming back every year and asking you for more cash. That's not our goal. That's not where we are, and that's not where we want to be. And so, anything else?
So you think it's just at one time?
That's our goal. The way that we would finance it is we have separated, we, Ernie and I, and Dade Moore, we are still part of the Agape Center, but the entire board, the entire board, didn't feel like they had the time to spend in this. So they asked us to separate. We're in the process of filing for 501(c)(3). We plan to be totally different from them. We're going to let them use the center floor and the way, what we will get, for example, if a person comes in, a homeless person comes in, and they would come in through the Agape Center. And instead of the Agape Center paying the Qualia Inn to house them, they will pay the TLC to house them. We've also talked to some other groups that do this, and we would do the same thing with them. Our goal would be Hancock Hope House, they let a person stay here. Our goal is a maximum of a month. And we're coming up with a plan as how they would pay for that as they are, because we feel strongly that no one needs to come in and spend the night on us unless they're willing to contribute. The Red Life is planning to furnish our food, we'll need hair. But also, we plan, anyone that's homeless here, they spend the night for us, if the Red Life is open the next day, we plan to bus them, drive them, and have them peel potatoes for the Red Life. The only way they're going to stay more than a few days is if they're working and they're looking for a job. It will probably be in the process of having to haul them to a job search. They either have to be working on their GED, they have to be, or working someplace, or picking up trash. We don't plan to make it as fancy enough. I talked to Rick Naby, and Rick's one request was, don't make it so fancy that they won't move in. We don't want them to want to move in. We want them only if that's our only hope. But we also don't want them living on someone's couch that one day that person is tired of them being there. And we get a lot of people like that, that's been living with someone, and they've said enough's enough. You got to get out of here. And then we get them. Last winter, I was on my way to Florida, I get a phone call from a gal from one of the churches locally, and she said, could you help me? I understand there's a family that's living across the tracks of a trackside in a tent. And we found out that that was a man, a woman, and three children. I'm in Nashville, Tennessee, headed for Florida. My only access to help and help in this family was to call Ernie. So I called Ernie and said, Ernie, can you take care of this? I gave him the phone number of the lady and asked him to run with it. The mayor got involved in that a little bit, and more than that. But there's homeless out here, gentlemen, and there's lots of homeless out there. Last week, we had, one night, we had five people at the Qualia Inn. I say five people, more than five, there was five families. One was a father, two children, so. But there's more, and if you read this article, if you read this article, you can see what's happening. And it's happening out here just as well as it's happening in the inner city, just not as much, just not as many.
Horace, how soon do you need an answer from the council?
We, as I said, we need the money, the October 1st, to pay, that's our agreement, our purchase agreement. Our goal would be, strictly a goal, that we would like to be up and running before the first snowflake falls. A lot of work to put in before the first snowflake falls. But that's the one we think. So ASAP, sooner the better, so.
Just a question on the continued funding throughout with the upheaval building. I understand that you're going to give a grant from the Agape Center, I guess, call it. What are other sources of revenue, outside of donations?
Hancock Hope House, they have a secondhand store, just like our Goodwill store here. And they, now keep in mind, that's three counties, and two of the counties are larger than us. But they have three people on that are full-time employees through that Goodwill store. I would call a Goodwill store, I don't know what they call it. They sell secondhand stuff. You can't believe I have today, Saturday, and lady, I stopped by at lots of the garage sales, and I asked if they have some furniture, that kind of thing, because just like the lady I mentioned, you have beat up, china furniture. But you obviously, the same time I was sitting at my desk, talking to her, and trying to figure out what we could do, the phone rang. Some of you know Janet Gunn. Janet Gunn called and said, we're cleaning my dad's house out, he's moved to Aspen Place, can you help us? We took enough stuff from John Stewart for this lady to get to take. Saturday, I'm going to buy a garage sale, and I said, we're doing the big things, we don't take clothes. Our goal is this, is to not duplicate something that someone else is doing, is to be in addition to, not in competition with. And so I stopped this garage sale, I said, if there's anything you have? And she said, will you be available this afternoon when we close at 5:00? And I said, I will, I'll probably hoard in my garden, but I have my phone with me. She called, and I couldn't get everything on the trailer, I had to put some stuff on my truck. It's still on the trailer because I haven't found help to unload it yet. But that kind of thing that we would have in the secondhand store, we just need to store it somewhere where we can do that. We would probably be open on a Saturday morning at maybe one hour a half getaway, advertise it so people would know. And that's the way the Greensville, that's the way they finance everything they do, and they've made enough money that, four years ago, they bought an apartment building that was on foreclosure, and they keep people up to a year until they get on their feet in this apartment building. We do not plan to go back there until, but that's part of the plan, Blake.
I don't doubt there's the need. I believe there's the, I don't know how extensive it is, but I'm sure there is need. And I applaud you all for responding to it, trying to find a way to reach out. And I'm not opposed to trying to find a way to be of support in an initiative like this or to capitalize it, so to speak. I don't think that, I don't think that we need to be in the business of operating it or funding it on a ongoing basis, but I'm not opposed to helping it get started. Now, having said that, I think it would be helpful for us to have a, you've outlined a business plan, but I think it might be helpful to put the business plan into some numbers and some statistics that the last number of years, there's so much money spent out for shelter, there's so much money you've spent out for other things. You could give us the Agape thing and give us some sense of that, but particularly looking at trying to capitalize or trying to do a business plan for this operation itself in terms of, okay, we expect so many dollars, so many people, in terms of the income to pay that rent is going to be coming from our supporters throughout the community, churches and the other people. What I like about this is that it is something that's done on another level, not that's regular level, but on a community level. And I guess I was hoping that your request for the letter, and I don't know how much follow-up you've done beyond the initial letter that may have been sent to people, or that was sent to people, in terms of getting additional dollars or additional sources of income. If the county is interested or willing, because this isn't just city problem, it is a county problem, and you don't respond to city people, you respond to county people, you don't respond to only anybody that's in the county, so even if they happen to be passing through or dead, broke, or unable to get beyond here for some reason. And so that is our problem as a community. If we can come up with some way of city, county, and community at large, really community obviously too, but that might be a nice way to try and provide for capitalization of it. So you need a capitalization of roughly $125,000, $140,000, just round numbers for retrofitting whatever. How do we come up with that? How do you come up with that? And then the other thing that obviously is part of business plan is then the ongoing operation of it, which I think I listed before. How do you propose to, you got in kind, you mentioned in kind donations for food, so that's covered, but what are the other ways in which you're going to be able to continue operating? But it's one thing for us to see and eat and be willing to respond to it, and one thing for us to do our part in getting it capitalized, but if it just goes flat, then it's all for naught. And so I guess what we need to have confidence in is that there is a plan put together and it's really the confidence in people, but I mean, we got to also see, just kind of thought and thought through that it looks like it can go and will go then with the right direction it is going to go. And so I have great confidence in the people we've listed here, but at the same time, I think we also need to see a business plan that can say, okay, within a period of time, we're not going to say, gee, now 501(c)(3) has a building, but there's no more operation going on.
But our hope would be, and we have talked with Diana at the homeless shelter.
New Directions.
And if you see the diagram that's on there. And if you see the diagram that's on there, we see there's room on the effort floor, that possibly, notice I use that way, possibly, that the two, we could join one another and retrofit the effort floor so that they can start again, keeping some of their people in the county, keep some of their people in the city, keep some of their people there. And we would hope that instead of them sending their people where they're sending them, that we would be able to house those people also for income for us. And there probably is room in the building also for another non-for-profit. And with that being in mind, we have approached, well, we have approached the township trustee. And that's a possibility, and if he can save any money on his rent. We haven't yet, but propose to Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And those are the ones.
I don't know about whether all those are appropriate or, you know, how appropriate it would be. But, but some, guarantee's not correct word, but some show of agreement that there will be, you have some real probability that you're going to have revenue stream to take care of the building. Not only, you know, the homeless that you may have one or two a week, or I don't know exactly how many you have. That might be nice also to see what kind of numbers, in terms of homeless people you've put up over the last year, two years, homeless dollars just spent.
We plan to prepare for 10 or 12 men, because while we're finding are lots more, lots more men than women, and no more than eight women, no more than.
At any one time.
At any one time. And so we would sure hope, and we would sure trust, that those numbers are double what it would be.
Yeah.
Or triple.
I would, I hope so.
No, but there is no way of knowing. There are numerous times, we had just like, Wakefield Saturday, that a homeless gentleman, homeless veteran, that found out in Kansas City where he was from. In Greensburg, Indiana, had the lowest unemployment rate in a demographic area. So he came to Greensburg because of that. We couldn't do anything for him, and so we ended up, Carmelo and I ended up taking him to Columbus. And I'm assuming he's still in Columbus, I don't know. Because we couldn't do anything for the gentleman. He just had a amputation of his left leg, and he really needed to be in a VA hospital. That's where he needed to be, but he wasn't.
I'm not speaking for the rest of, I agree, I'm a council member, but if, I'm willing to entertain it, and I'm willing, but I guess I would like to have, as I asked, a business plan put together for us to take a look at in a couple of weeks, have a couple of weeks to take a look at it, follow up with questions or something.
Don't do that.
That's me speaking, I'm not speaking for my fellow colleagues.
I believe if, I must be correct, if I'm wrong, regarding the council, what I hear is that they'd like to see a financial history of their expenses in the past with a financial business plan for the future, and see if you can get a new user, and understand you need sort of commitment or however, people or entities. And then bring that, give them a little bit of time, get it to them, so that they can, with that requirement, this council meeting to be considered.
I'd like to give us all a better understanding of what we're, what we're going to do.
That's unimportant. And while I have the opportunity, Mrs. Les comes to me last summer and introduced themselves. They've been quite outgoing in this community, wanting to help, and become friends with a lot of people. And you know, that's the type of people who I'd like to see in Greensburg, people who want to help others and be part of this community. You know, they have a long history in their life. Up on Greensburg is her granddaughter and her husband working here at local plant. So we're glad to have them in Greensburg. Would you like to stand and be seen, please, and just please? We thank you for your commitment and being, becoming a Greensburg citizen, and glad to have you.
Thank you.
They're right down the street here.
Thank you.
By the way, Mayor, it looks like their other daughter is moving to Greensburg.
Or anything like their mother, father, grandparents, you know, we're glad to have them here.
They're not homeless either.
Good deal.
I guess, before you take off, I just, my comments here, and I think this is a very worthwhile project, what you're looking at. But I guess my, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from here, but quick, before you come back even, is I truly think the city needs to consider what the funds we have and what we use them for. And I think we have to get out of the business of supporting non-for-profits. And not to offend you or say that your cause isn't worthy, it's that that money is there for city projects. I mean, we're not even putting the money into capital improvements for wastewater and city water treatment that we need to. We don't have money to repair the roads that we need to repair, and yet we're spending $170,000 in non-for-profits this year in the spring. We need to reassess how we spend our money, what we spend our money on. And it's just, if these needs are there for the community, then we have to find ways for the community to support those needs and show that support. And that's, you know, from a Christian standpoint, this is a great idea. But representing the council and representing the community, I think we have to be stewards of our money. And I, you know, I don't want you to feel like you're going to come back and do all that work for naught. But I think this is a great worthwhile effort, but I'm not going to support it, just telling you that upfront. And that's why, just because I think we need to get out of the business of supporting non-for-profit organizations.
And Jamie, sometimes you might consider, we'd like to help everybody that needs help for the community. You know, if it's needed to help fellow men. We need to limit how much money we have there that we want to divide.
Where are we going to say, where are we going to start saying no? I mean, every non-for-profit organization ought to be coming to the city asking for money. Where are we going to say no? And we have to, we have to get out of the business of supporting non-for-profit organizations and spending those tax dollars on the needs of the state. That's my viewpoint.
We'll see you next month.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
This time, we have a lot of abatements here. You remember, I think it was last night, or about a year ago, Three City Village came to us, and they had changed their application for grant money, I mean, the federal, federal government and to, preservation, from a senior living center to a low to moderate unit, the address factory, the wire factory there. And the council did agree to support what they're planning to do. And they had originally filed an abatement on the senior housing. Well, because the use is going to be a little dirt from the woods before, I thought they should refile the big request, SD1, on this project, as it is.
Yes, but they would have lost a year because the project was not approved for the funds. In order to get that timeframe that they're asking for, we also asked to renew that.
We have made a commitment to them, originally, I did have to repair sidewalks, something like that around our infrastructure. By the time the city pulls up a new, or the contractor lets up the loan, but in this case, it's already there, probably something to repair. So I think I can give some points to that, or points, give more points on that application. And that's what I think that is, make good use of the old building, and work on tearing down ourselves.
The two, the two new employees on this, I mean, I know this probably, the fact that it's redoing, reusing this building, putting it back into a taxable entity that will last more than 10 years, but maybe the next 30 at least, may have merit in itself. But two, we've got two sergeants, are these two full-time people here?
I can't, probably.
Were they part-time or what?
They are both part-time.
How were they?
30, 90 minutes, we only have the part-time. And it would be one maintenance person and one property manager. I'm sorry, I'm Delal Bierstein, I'm with Keller Development. I'm representing Three City Estates and Development Services, not entirely in Three City Estates, Three City Village. Apologize for that.
That was the old one?
Yes.
Okay, that time, that's a little bit.
Yeah.
The salary's pretty, pretty.
Pretty kind of low.
Pretty low, yeah. I mean, if I was just looking at it just from the standpoint of being like, oh, but I'd say no.
Right.
And there's nothing there. But as I said, this has different merits and different rationale for it, so.
And we are actually locked into serving low income for 30 years.
Yeah, I understand, I know what.
Sure.
The improvement should increase the property tax number, but it's not 501(c)(3).
Yeah, it should get, in the long run, it'll be worth the return.
Very aggressive.
We're trying.
Good thing.
So, any questions on this particular payment? He's a 10-year on real estate. The committee has met, and they support the 10-year, but yet we are open for your comments or suggestions as well. Anyone?
You're right, the 10-year was because that was not requested, or that was what you returned?
It was requested, and we, I thought it was a bargain, it was negotiations, and it was worthwhile. So we're going to have to take the same path we have on some other buildings. And this is for the restored.
Yes.
As it is, preserve the original looks.
Yep. That's not going to be a historic rehab, I mean, because we wanted to put in more efficient windows and that type of. But it is maintaining the building, and we're actually taking the paint off the outside, so it'll be the actual break.
Blake, Terry? Yeah, that's what we discussed, we need your support of. Would you make a motion that we accept this potential payment for Three City Village Stadium?
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye, please. All those same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for your time, and thank you, council.
Good luck. This time, Ms. Valio, leading Mr. Lesko's here, representing Valio and the payments. Might have been here four, if you remember, about a year and a half ago.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. I'm Mike Lesko, I'm with Valio, I'm over Port Rocks in Troy, Michigan.
So what we'll do here on the renewals, and I worked on that. Blake and Terry, just to take a second look at things, to make sure that the employee count is relatively close to where it should be at this time, and it is. We went back from day one, it was 2004, we started out there, we calculated up to date. So it's very close, our numbers are, and they may have the information we have, but we didn't have close on the numbers. And so on the renewals, we all agree that they're up to date, and they're in what they're supposed to be with commitment, with the manpower and retaining as well. So the committee suggested to approve all the renewals.
Do you want to do the renewals now, before you do the new?
Yes, we have to see if one's new first. And that is 2006, that's 17, 18, 2007-1, 2008-9, and 10, and 18, and 19, and 20, and 2011-06, and 7, 8, 2013-01, 2013-04. That's, well, I haven't looked at your. And I have looked in 2006-17, this is last year on that. 18 is last year, 2007-1 is last year, 2009 is the last year, 2008-9 is last year. 2010 is the last year on that as well. Yes, our others have two years, but check those out, too, we agree. So I would entertain a motion for those resolutions to approve renewals. Motion made by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Blake. Any further discussion? Eric, none, all those in favor, say aye, please. All those post same sign, Eric, none, motion passes. Then we have the new abatements. 2014-5, and 6.
No, 6, 7.
Five is 68. Six, seven, eight.
Yep, six, seven, eight, nine. And if, I'm sure you've, the council wrote that very carefully. And basically, that is from a period of beginnings.
Lots of 10 years.
Yeah, June 1st, 2014, ranging through May 31st, 2020. And those consist of 257 additional jobs.
These are seven-year?
Six years. All personal property.
Because I don't see it marked here on the actual resolution.
We didn't mark it, we're waiting for your approval, for the council.
Okay, all right, so that's what you're requesting.
Yes, six years.
And so you mentioned the number of jobs. So these are discrete numbers, and the 63 of 2000, or Resolution 6, is not part of the 72 of number seven? And it's not part of, and it's not part of the 66 on eight, so those are all?
That's correct.
This is just basically all the business, okay, that we've got, we've got a board, and we're like, we have to create 257 jobs, it's an investment of law, probably 18, 12 million dollars.
And, and the, these are going to be jobs that you intend to hire in there, or are you looking at temp?
No, no, these will be full-time positions.
There yet?
I guess the question, then, just to kind of go along with what I'm saying, are they new positions, or are these, some of these going to be positions that are going to phase out, and then you will?
There'll be some that'll phase out, but those jobs will be lost because that business is done.
So what percentage is that, do you think?
Well, it's hard to say, basically, if you look at the abatement.
Basically, if you look at the abatements that we've had over the last two or three years, okay, our target was to hire, I believe it was a hundred and fifty-five new employees, and we ended up hiring, I think, two hundred and forty-five employees, who are actually very low on that end. And these were new jobs that created a problem, I believe, to four hundred and thirty-four full-time positions over there, it's six hundred and five.
I think it's six hundred and five now, because you still have more to go towards the abatements that you applied for by your debt, to fulfill that, correct, make it six seventy-three?
I think we're at that point now.
Because the, technically, the states on all the six seventy-three on the cover sheet.
Uh, for the target?
Uh, since our employees, as of two twenty-eight fourteen, six seventy-three.
Okay, solid, okay, okay, so we're at six seventy-three now?
Yeah, so we're open. Now, when you hit the six seventy-three plus two fifty-seven, will you be maintaining that, or will you be losing any of those employees?
We will some, okay, but basically, we're looking at over nine hundred positions, full-time positions, to get back where you were in oh eight, nine, back in there before things went downhill. It was, it was a few years earlier than that, when you were off the nine hundred employees over there. It was, it was probably back in two thousand.
Three or four. Yeah, ten, nine thirty, so you're saying, or somewhere around close to nine hundred after seven, nine, right? Some of the jobs, contracts. Still a big improvement, where you were here a while back, what, four fifty, or last four thirty-six, I believe it was. Any questions on these, council?
Well, I'd, I've got business, I think I do.